I know.
Okay. Other department heads, chief?
I just needed to purchase some evidence collection material, diagrams, tape and stuff like that.
Okay. Marshall's got that?
Yeah.
Okay. Marshall's gonna take care of that. All right. Okay. We got our engineer here tonight, city engineer, and we're gonna call on Sam to come up and talk to us about whatever you got, a couple of roads or something.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking forward to working with you fellas. I've worked with most of you before and some of you I haven't. Looking forward to it. Let's get you up, let me know. And keep this in mind, I am semi-retired and what that means is you work when your life tells you to.
I understand that.
You understand.
I do.
No, seriously. Do what's needed. We have a couple of streets and I've got some information here. I'd like to try to set you guys in this part. One, and I give the rest to y'all, son. Coffee? When I get smaller, I've done this before. That here, I'll put two of them together.
So how's the senior put you to work?
Sir?
The senior put you to work, so that's what I got.
Yeah, that's right. You got it. These are streets and two different subdivisions and we need to talk about them separately. The first one is, it's called Three Grants Subdivision. And I thought it might have been a casino near that since that was called Three Grants. But it's three grand kids. That person has three grandkids, that's what it's claimed back there. And Mr. Mike Brawls, it's up off DFW Road. Subdivision was constructed over five years ago and jerk was put on there and except there. Dr. Barnett feels up there. I didn't know that until I started going up there. But anyway, jerk was on it back in June. I met with Mr. Brawls and cul-de-sac was, didn't meet the standards. Went back and changed the plat to give us a fifty-foot radius on the cul-de-sac. It has one dead end road on it. It's called Grand Wayne and Ms. Kelly has a plat with that. I have a plat somewhere. And has fifty-foot right-of-way and it was paved back in the early fall by Charlie Watts. And all that's mentioned in the letter there gives an outline. And all the work that's been done up there, it's been done in accordance with the latest ordinance of the 2010 ordinance on the outlining requirements for streets. That ordinance number nine dash twenty dash ten dash eight were accepted by the city. So I went back and began last week just to double check and see what all the reins had done to it and everything was good. Like I say, we've been working with Mr. Brawls since June. They've been on a recommendation on that street. You want to take them individually or take them both?
We'll do, we'll do them separately.
Okay.
We'll, we'll have to do them in the...
That's right.
I'm sorry. This is work session.
My bad. Next one is Pines subdivision. The Pines also has one dead-end street with cul-de-sac. The street doesn't have a name at this time that I'm aware of. Has a right-of-way of fifty feet. Has cul-de-sac at the end with a radius of fifty feet. Fifty-foot radius, which is hundred, hundred-foot diameter. So I met, first met with the developer, Mr. Posey, back in May when they started the construction of the roads in there. And it has three granite structures. They're all meet the standards. And let's say the base, I met back with him back in October and noticed some things that needed. The cul-de-sac needed extending out to provide for the forty-foot radius of pavement. Six-foot radius right-of-way for ditches and u-cultures. That gives us ten feet for that on the outside and then eighty-foot diameter paving. And all that's been done by Charles Watts. He paved that road first week of November and I looked at that road. And it's my opinion on that road that it also meets the minimum standard for streets as outlined in city ordinance nine dash twenty eight, ten eight. Now, since the road was newly constructed, the base hadn't been on there through a winter season. They give it time to settle down and get compacted over there. Of course, they compacted it. And I recommend that the city accept the street, but that the property owners weren't that street for up to six months. They just go through the winter season and see how it holds up and everything because it was built here in a dry place. I just think it would be wise and prudent to do that and I talked to the property owner about that and they understand. But obviously, there is some additional work that needs to be done. They're aware of that. The areas outside the pavement, between the pavement and the right-of-way has been bladed and smoothed up, but it does not have vegetation established. You know, grass sowed and soil stabilized so that it will not wash away. And they're supposed to do that as soon as the weather will permit then.
Will you go back and inspect that at that sixth month period?
Yes.
Okay. And by that time, then that vegetation should be started or close to it.
Yeah, and I think we need to prepare agreement and then get it to sign.
You have a couple more too, Sam?
Yeah, I'm working on a couple more. The Highland subdivision over off Chambers Avenue. And also, Mr. Robert Keith has a subdivision. Turn at fifty payers on Thompson Avenue and it's that first subdivision on the left just across from Robertson Chapel. Mr. Keith has paved that street. Also, Mr. Watts did that back in first of November. And he still has some ditch work to do and some grass to sow and all of that, but I'm not ready to make the recommendation on it.
But the Highland and everything over there is in pretty good shape. You just gotta do some more inspection and lab work about it.
Yes. I think we've already accepted some of them in the past. Yes, need to accept them twice or this week need to accept them. Need to accept them all at one time, but...
That may be the misrepresentation since someone's partially already done.
Yeah. Well, there's a little issue with the cul-de-sac going down to the garden homes, but I'll respond about that. But yes, I hope that I'll be next year. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm also working with her on the fact that it's an alley. I did get some good maps today from Lad Engineering who has all Mr. EJ Dunn's records. So the maps that, out those subdivisions that are recorded, one of them in particular was not very clear. It was not legible, so I got some good maps from Mr. Goddard down there. So I'll be getting some descriptions.
But you're working on them with the city attorney?
Yeah, I called her to see what we need to do.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks a lot.
It's okay.
I do it?
No.
I think it's four point.
It's usually the way it works, Sam.
They'll do some money business.
Okay. We'll start off with Marshall. What you got tonight?
I just think, can hire Johnny to, or get this started. Make a motion to buy some evidence bags at a cost of somewhere between five and six hundred dollars.
Got anything else?
Mayor, I'm gonna have those two streets that Sam just brought to us to accept them as in our city streets. The other thing I have, we're gonna purchase a truck and a half-ton trailer to put behind our duck truck where we'll be able to transport our backhoe. Backhoe's towards the top of the mountain. Quit wearing the tires out and be a lot safer. We'll start putting it around, drive it everywhere and I'll bring that to you.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, so we're gonna purchase, we're gonna purchase that trailer to haul that backhoe on and to drive it everywhere?
Right.
Okay. All right. So that's gonna come out of the sanitation, I think?
Right.
Okay. All right. Mr. Frank?
The only thing I have is we're gonna introduce something in town. We actually been working with a three-person committee and we're kinda looking at this and we've got a term we set for October that we wanna introduce to the thing called Cruisin' the Park. And it's basically a lot like Fort Payne and Scottsboro's doing right now where you got, Scottsboro does the first Saturday, I think it is. Fort Payne does the third, so we kinda opted to go with the second. But we're gonna have food vendors, inflatables for the kids. We'll have live music every week. They'll have fifty-fifty drawings for the car shows, cornhole tournaments and just stuff to draw people to town. And we're gonna actually shut down the park and have the car show in the park. We're gonna start that and it'll be over April through October. I've got the information and stuff on the flyer now for the...
What's the times on that? I mean like time of day?
It will vary. We'll start out, I think it's gonna be basically from like five to eight and as it gets warmer, it'll go at six to nine or something. And just basically set it with the car clubs.
And it's gonna be right here in the park?
It's gonna be in the park.
Okay. Sounds good.
And I've got flyers for all the papers if we're gonna look at that one. That's all I got.
Mr. Ross?
Mayor, all I've got is we're making a motion to buy an LED light bar for our fire trucks, our rescue truck. We have a problem with it. The fires are melting and it's just taken care of. So I'll be making a motion. It'd be two thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and I've been coming out of fire fund.
Okay.
So that's all I got tonight.
All right. Anything else? Okay. I think I wound up with a long list of things. The first thing, the first meeting in, in January is, is set for January the second, which is a Monday. And that is a holiday, so we're gonna move that meeting, if it's okay with the council. And somebody wants to bring this up when we get in the meeting. We'll move it to Tuesday, January the third at regular time, four fifteen. Work session and then the council meeting at five o'clock. All right. And then the next thing is, we used to have our hours at the city hall was eight to four and we're moving them back to eight to four. All the other towns around us, their city halls hours are the same as, as that, as eight to four. And so we're gonna move that back to eight to four, starting January the third, which is the Tuesday. I'm gonna make a recommendation here for this, that the city employees, after going over the, I'll back up just a little bit right here. After going over a few things with Betty and, and working on some stuff on the budget, I'm gonna make a recommendation that we do a three percent raise for the city employees, full-time employees.
How does that affect, you said, just full-time?
Well, I'm just leaving out the temporary workers in the summer to start with. We'll, we can adjust those if we get closer to the summer on, you know, the temps.
Right. But nothing is like our part-time that we're using now on another basis?
We're, we'll probably go ahead and do them.
Okay.
I'll get Betty on that Wednesday.
That was my curiosity, because we've got some that's, had to retire or do this or that, that's still on staff, but you would consider it part-time, but Tommy wouldn't have liked it.
No. Tommy's not really considered that way. Lad has submitted a bill for the phase two part of the wastewater treatment plant and it's eight thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. I'll be bringing that up for somebody to make a motion to pay it. That's the engineering fees for that, for that phase two. Sam's Construction has submitted a bill for phase two. This is the starting part of phase two, which is about a five hundred and, oh, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project. So this will be their first invoice for this. And this has to go through, we have to check off on it. Lad has to check off on it. It has to go to USDA and it's checked off again, then it comes back to be paid. So this is just the process that we go through on this. This, this project has already been brought through the council, voted on, the whole project has, but we thought that it would be better if everybody kinda knew each bill that came through on it and could see that bill. So anyway, it's, the Sam Construction invoices sixty-five thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars. So that will be the second, the, the first invoice for Sam's Construction to be paid. The next thing I have is, we have a police officer that's in the chief's department and he's got some, some sickness and we're needing some help in the city hall. So it's, it's something that we're gonna do temporary that we're, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move him from a police officer to a temporary employee at the city hall, which will be working with our revenue officer. He'll be working with our court magistrate and he'll be working with our sanitation clerk. All three different departments he will be working in there. That's David Snay. We'll be moving to, from the police department to the city hall and it's a temporary basis. The next thing I have, told you I have a long list. The next thing I have is, back a few months ago, we refinanced some loans and I don't know exactly how this happened, but it was supposed to have been set up on a five-year pay and for some reason it got set up on a six-month. So it has come due right now. And First Southern State Bank is the one it's with. And I talked to them and they said, well, all you have to do is run it back to the city council, get it approved. We're gonna leave the percentage rate the same as what we gave you, so we're gonna give you that same five years, starting now. And so that's what we're gonna do. If it's okay with the council and they empower me to go sign the papers, we will, we'll just set that loan up for five years instead of six months because we can't pay for it in six months. Everything's the same. We're, we're paying, I think it's twenty thousand dollars a year on that. And so it'll be about paid off. It's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It'll be almost paid off in five years, so. Okay? This is one, this next one is, I, I don't know, I don't know how y'all wanna handle this, but I'd like to do it a certain way. Our utility bills, our power, water, phone, gas bills, and sometimes our gasoline falls in this. We get the bill and it's right after the first meeting, but its payment is due before the second meeting. So we get charged a late charge, a lot of times monthly, because we don't get it signed off on before we can get it paid. You know, we can't, we gotta have it signed off. So what I'm wondering, and this is just a question for y'all, why do we want to pay a late charge on, on our power bill and phone bill? I mean, what I wanna do is, if you'll okay it, we're gonna start paying them before we don't have to pay a late charge, then all the bills will still come across your desk. You have to sign off on them every month. We're not gonna do away with it where you don't have to sign off on them. You'll still get to see them, but we don't have to pay late charges on them because the dates don't fall right for it not. I mean, we're, we may be paying, over the last few years, we may have paid quite a few thousand dollars in late charges because they wouldn't pay them because we didn't sign off on them ahead of time. Does that make sense? So I'm, I'm just asking for permission for us to do that instead of us having to pay late charges. That's just, and you'll still see the bill because we're gonna still run them by. Every bill will still come across the table. So that was just something that I thought was, that we needed to fix.
Yeah, it needs to be.
So, all right. We got, anything else from them?
I'll be here.
All right. We'll take a short break. Come back at five o'clock, get this stuff, bug it on. Ricky?
Here.
Brandon?
Here.
Derek?
Here.
Got one missing? Okay. They have a motion to approve minutes.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I'll start off with my stuff first. And so the first thing I'm gonna do is make a recommendation that, that we move the January second meeting to January the third on Tuesday because of the holiday.
I make a motion and we move those.
I say it.
We have a motion and a second to move the meeting from the second to the third of January. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This next one, I don't know that I'd have to have a vote on this, but I'm gonna bring it to a vote if somebody would make a motion on it. Changing the city hall hours to eight to four. It was eight to five. We'll change that to eight to four, starting January the third.
So move. I make a motion if we change that, Mayor.
Okay.
I say it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes at it. Like I stated earlier, we had went over the budget and Betty was good with this right here. So I'm making a recommendation that we give our city employees a three percent raise starting the first pay period of January.
I make a motion that we give our employees well-deserved at three percent pay raise.
Can I have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes at it. Lad has submitted a bid, I mean not a bid, but an invoice for eight thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents pertaining to the phase two of the wastewater treatment plant project. We need to pay that invoice?
I make a motion.
All right. We have a motion to pay the invoice to Lad.
I say it.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes at it. Same period of time, same phase two. Sam Construction has invoiced us for sixty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars on this project. We need to go ahead and pay that too.
I make a motion.
We have a motion.
Say it.
Marshall, second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? My recommendation is to move David Snay, which is a full-time employee, to the city hall on a temporary basis. Now, he's still a full-time employee, but he will be there as a temporary, as a temporary period of time. So I put that in, I put that out there for a motion.
I make a motion if we move David Snay to part-time or full-time until we...
Move him to the police department, yeah.
Moving from the police department to the city hall as a full-time employee, but a temporary basis.
Right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This next one is the Weekly Post Building, which is the building we're in, which is now called a municipal building. The, the loan somehow got set up for six months. It was supposed to have been five years. We need to go back and redo that paperwork. So if y'all empower me to sign that loan to, to fix that up for five years, the interest rates gonna stay the same and the payments are staying the same, is what we had originally set up.
I make a motion to empower the mayor to sign them.
The paperwork will page.
The work will... I say it.
All right, we have a motion to empower me to sign the paperwork at First Southern State Bank pertaining to the municipal building for a five-year pay. We'll be paying around twenty thousand dollars a year. Have a motion and a second for that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes at it. This next one is the one about the utility bills. If somebody wanted to make a motion that we go ahead and pay those bills and then we'll still get to see the, the copy of the bills as they come across the desk, but we won't be paying any late charges.
Yeah, I was just talking to you, I thought we ought to get, and some of them others have, there's automatic draft and it's actually no charge or actually you give a bit of a percentage off if you let them draft.
We, we checked on that and by what the municipal government says, each check has to have two signatures on it. You can't do it with a draft.
Yes.
We were gonna do it that way, but by that, we didn't, so.
I move, we do that, Mayor.
I say it.
We have a motion and a second to pay our utility bills, then send the copy of the bills across the council's table for signatories. Have a motion and a second on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I got one more thing I'm gonna bring up and this is, we'll, we'll discuss this a little bit or whatever, but we're almost done with the, the room over there, the filing room. And it's gonna be, it'll be about three weeks. I mean, this, we should be completely finished with it in, say, another week and a half. But we forgot to do anything about the flooring. So tile, I'm gonna say is gonna be five hundred dollars to seven hundred and fifty, but that's what we need to put in there. So we don't have any, you know, like trip areas, like where it's good and smooth. So I'm gonna recommend putting ceramic tile back in there. So if, if y'all will make a motion to empower us to put that out for bid, you know, or, or get to, get to cost, you know, from our two local people here in town about doing the tile, then we would go with that. So, and, and, and you can throw out there, you can say, all right, it can't go over a thousand dollars. That way we're covered, be the dri- I don't think it'd be that high, but, but whatever you make the motion, so. Need a motion?
I make a motion.
What was it? I remember a long time.
Yeah, but you get two different people not to go over a thousand dollars of tile in your part of the city hall.
Okay.
I say it.
We have a motion and a second to do the tile in the, in the filing room. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes at it. Your motion, Mr. Snay?
Not till they go over the rest of the way, Steve.
Oh, yeah, y'all, y'all, y'all ain't done, y'all did. See, we went over backwards while I go, so, hey, I got mine done.
I mean, I don't have anything to bring in, but I mean, I'm good to go.
Well, see, we went backwards while I go is what messed me up on that. Yeah. All right, Marshall, you started it off.
All right. Let's get to one item. I make a motion that we authorize Johnny to purchase evidence bags for the police department at a cost of somewhere between five and six hundred dollars.
I say it.
Oh, we have a motion and a second for evidence bags for the police department? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes at it.
Before it leaves my, I think Johnny, I wanna say this. I think Johnny and those guys done a good job the other day. We had that little chase that come through the town and people might not know a lot about it, but there was about fifteen cars. And I talked to Johnny, it got me curious as to what, you know, what, you know, caused the action as far as like what would you would do in that scenario? You know, and I talked to Johnny about it and I think me and him was in agreement. You know, sometimes you gotta weigh the calls, you know, as far as like, are we gonna chase people over a fifteen-dollar item or whatever? And I just felt like Johnny, he was wise in that, you know, he, he talked to his officers about that. You know, what other towns do, that's their business. And we, you know, can do our best to assist them, but I just thought he, he made a good call. I thought he was real wise and I talked to some of the other officers and I thought they done a real good job to handle that. I just wanna say as a side note.
Done a good job.
That's all I have.
You what? Ricky?
Mayor, I wanna purchase a twelve and a half ton lowboy trailer to hook behind the dump truck that we purchased. We'll be able to do with this in the future, when we have storms and this and that and other. We, it takes forever to drive our backhoe from our city shop. Backhoe's towards top of the mountain, some of our areas. We can purchase this trailer for twenty-six hundred dollars and start carrying our backhoe places. Because there's a lot of times that it takes us forty-five minutes to air to get it to where we need it to be for a fifteen-minute job. So with this truck that we have and the trailer behind it now, we'll be able to do that. It's also working real well, well, I was talking with Alan there earlier. Since we're hauling the sludge down there now, the truck, this truck actually hauls white as much as the other truck did. So that'll save us trips and money back and forth to the sewer plant I'm gonna be planning to fill. So I'll put motion that we purchase this trailer for twenty-six hundred dollars.
I'll say it.
Oh, we have a motion and a second to purchase a utility trailer to be paid out of the sanitation fund?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes out. Okay, Ricky?
Another thing I have, Mayor, I'm gonna do this to you with ones. Sam, our city engineer, was with us earlier in the workshop. The, he's signed off, have the paperwork and give all of y'all a copy of it as well, to accept these streets. And the first one would be up at the Grand Estate subdivision. I'll make a motion if we accept that as a city street in one.
Okay. Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept Grand Estate subdivision street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The other one, Mayor, is the Pine Hill subdivision. This is another one that Sam recommended if we accept. Back over in this other area, like I said, y'all have paperwork on it as well. So I'll make a motion that we go ahead and accept the Pine Hill subdivision street as well.
Have a motion?
Second motion.
Have a motion and a second to accept Pine's subdivision? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, appreciate it. Mr. Frum?
I don't have anything now, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Mayor, all I've got is, I wanna make a motion to buy some LED light bar for our fire truck or.
Rescue truck.
Rescue truck for two thousand nine hundred ninety dollars coming out of the fire fund.
Okay.
So that's, that's all I have tonight, so I'm about to make a motion.
Oh, we have a motion to buy a light bar for the, this is installed, ready to go.
Mayor, I'd like to comment on that light bar. That's, the reason they're changing that light bar, Derek didn't go into detail, but the reason they're changing that light bar, the chief had showed me over there Saturday. It's not actually blowing the fuses, it's actually melting the fuses.
Yeah, it's melting.
So we're gonna have a truck to melt to the ground. And we're changing that to LED is gonna change that power source of that.
This is actually gonna get fixed when we take this truck and it goes to NAFCO. It's already been approved to do their maintenance and stuff on it. So it's actually gonna get swapped out when it's over there. So, and he's supposed to get with me on the date and that's supposed to go over there. It's supposed to be sometime soon, but it's gonna get changed over when they do all that.
You get the motion and second? We have a motion?
Alright, thank you for myself. I appreciate that.
Alright, Brandon's gonna second it. We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have a motion to pay the monthly bills?
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
I'll make motion to adjourn.
We have a second? Let's go a little bit further. All in favor of paying monthly bills?
Aye.
All opposed? Who made that motion? Ricky?
I did.
Brandon made the motion and second?
I did.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, unless we want to space more time here.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.